I can record.
Can you record?
Yes.
I have a record button.
I just, I just pressed it.
Okay, well.
We're good to go?
Yes.
All right, roll call please Kelly.
Okay, Alderman Plufka.
Here.
Alderwoman Parker Tice.
Here.
Alderwoman Sims.
Here.
Alderman Weggie.
Here.
Alderman Gould.
Here.
Alderman Lockmiller.
Here.
Alderwoman Evelyn, not here. And Alderwoman O'Neal, not here.
I'm here.
No, she's here.
I'm here.
I'm gone.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. My apologies. Present two, four, six, we have seven members present which represent.
Great, thank you. We have, on the, next time on the agenda is, we have no announcements, appointments, proclamations, and recognitions, which brings us to public hearing. We have one item, it's a continuation from the last meeting, and that is a public hearing to consider the conditional use permit for eighty seventy-one, eighty seventy-five Manchester. So with that, I'm going to open up the public hearing for a conditional use permit and site development plan to permit a recreational facility, a swim school, for property located at eight thousand seventy-one and eight thousand, eight thousand seventy-five Manchester Road. So if anybody in the public would care to, to speak to this matter, now is the time to, to do so. And I think last meeting, we had somebody who wanted to speak to it, but they were unable to. I don't know Kelly, if that person is in attendance, I don't see that they're in attendance tonight.
I don't see anyone raising their hand at this point to speak.
Okay. And I think we had a presentation at the last meeting, so we don't need to do it again at, at this meeting. So seeing that nobody in the public cares to speak to this issue with that, I will close the public hearing and move on to the next item, which is the agenda approval. Are there any changes, deletions, additions to the agenda? Any objection to approving same by acclamation?
May I speak? Yes, we heard from the Brentwood Public Library earlier this afternoon, and they are asking for this item to be placed on hold until the meeting in January. There are some additional edits that they would like to make to the lease and service agreement.
All right, so we will move, remove that item from the agenda. So with that, are there any other changes or additions? Seeing none, the agenda will be approved with that modification of removing the matter concerning the library board. Next on the agenda is item six, citizens comments. Anybody care to address the board? Now is the time to do so. You will be given up to three minutes.
No one has raised their hand. Mayor, there's nobody to speak.
Okay, seeing nobody present to speak, considers the comments, we'll move on to mayor and aldermen reports. I have no report. Alderman Plufka. You're muted Dave.
I was also having a conversation with my wife. I have no report.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Tice.
No report.
Alderwoman Sims.
No report.
Alderman Weggie.
The first sustainability committee meeting is going to be January eleventh, I believe, at six P M. So, good to, good to get launched on that. That's it.
Great. Alderman Gould.
No report.
Alderman Lockmiller.
Yes, I have one thing. The public safety committee meeting that was originally scheduled for Wednesday, this Wednesday, the twenty-third, and then postponed until either January fifth or sixth. We're trying to get everybody together on a date, so we'll announce it through the website and at the next board meeting when the public safety will meet. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman O'Neal.
I'll record.
Okay, great. Let's keep moving. The next item is the city administrator report. We have two items under that. And if we, we will wait for our city administrator to come back, so she can, the first is the, here she comes.
Sorry about that, we're trying to get Pat on, on board.
No problem.
If the mayor would recognize chief space to share with the board the announcement of a promotion at the police department.
Okay, I'm gonna, we're just gonna hold on a second, I think, I can hear Pat in the background.
Are you logged in? Pat?
I'll see her. Mayor, you may continue, we'll work on.
Okay, great. Chief Space, I think you've got some good news for us.
Yes, sir, thank you for taking a few minutes to recognize that we're getting ready to make a promotion. First thing I wanted to mention was, for about two months, we've gone through a promotion process here in the police department with the assistance of Jason Coats. And it was a, it's a difficult process for the officers to go through, there were three of them involved, and we got three very good candidates, it was a difficult decision. We did come up with a candidate that we presented to Bola for promotion, and she approved it. And we're proud to have with us today Corporal Joe Sullivan, soon to be Sergeant Joe Sullivan. I'd like to, Auntie Major Hawkins has a few words, if she could indulge us.
I just want to really briefly give you a quick bio on Sergeant Sullivan. He was born and raised in Belle Fountain Neighbors and attended Riverview Gardens High School. He graduated from there in two thousand and two. And then in two thousand and eight, he joined Saint Louis City Police Department, where he served in the eighth and ninth districts. In May of two thousand and eleven, he was hired by the city of.
Okay, got it, thanks Bola.
Sorry about that Major.
That's okay. He became an acting supervisor beginning in two thousand and seventeen, and he was ultimately promoted to corporal in October of two thousand and eighteen. He was made acting sergeant in April of two thousand and twenty, and he's remained there until he was recently promoted. His wife Kelly and his two daughters Kara, eight, and Allison, five, are with him here tonight to celebrate the pending of his badge.
Behind me is obviously Sergeant Sullivan. Joe, you want to introduce your family, please?
This is my wife Kelly, and my daughters Kara and Allison.
And we'd like his wife Kelly to take the honor of presenting Joe's badge and putting it on his uniform. I'll get a little late for you.
Smile with a cheese. All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you Sergeant. Absolutely, round of applause.
Congratulations.
You know, on behalf of the city, I want to congratulate you on this well-deserved promotion. We're fortunate to have you as part of our, of our, as a part of our department. And it's unfortunate that we have to do it this way, by Zoom, to acknowledge the, your promotion, but hopefully, when we get back to some normalcy, we'll be able to have a normal recognition for you. But in the meantime, again, congratulations, and thank you for everything that you do for, for the residents and for everybody who visits the city.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Next, under city administrators report, Bola, I think you've got an update on the Brentwood bound. Craig is handling.
Correct.
Evening, Craig Schiller with Navigate Building Solutions. So in regards to the Brentwood bound update, starting with construction costs, total spend since the last Board of Aldermen meeting is seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-seven cents. Next is soft costs, total spent since the last Board of Aldermen meeting is one hundred sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-six cents. And that was on legal fees, Deer Creek flood mitigation, and G R G connector design fees, Union Pacific Consulting, material testing, and property surveys. Next is property acquisitions. Total spend since the last Board of Aldermen meeting is two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-five cents. That was adjustment for the previous closing costs. We essentially had a projection, and we were able to realize what those actual closing costs were on this warrant list. Property taxes, property acquisitions, and re-establishment expenses. And the bottom of the report are the categories of funding and additional funding sources, no changes there. So that is my update, I can take any questions.
Yeah, we have any questions for Craig? Alderman Weggie.
Yeah, hey Craig, can I get clarification on the dog park closure south of Manchester?
What exactly, like, when, when is it going to be closed?
Yeah, so my understanding is it's closing December thirtieth, and is that, is that a permanent closure of that due to the construction, or will it be reopened when it's accessible? Again, I know we're planning to move it ultimately, but is, is September thirtieth the end?
It is the end, and then as a result of having to start building the pond, which will then close off that, that whole part of the park.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other questions for Craig? Okay, seeing none, we will move on, thank you Craig. This brings us to item nine, the consent agenda, under which we have seven items. Are there any questions about any of those items? Alderman Lockmiller.
Yeah, would I be able to ask Mark Murray a question regarding some expenses on the twenty twenty, the twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen C O Ps warrant list?
Sure.
Mark, thanks for answering some of those questions that are in the narrative, I just wanted to focus on the fifth question, on trying to get some of the taxes we're going to have to pay to the county back, since we're a tax-exempt entity. Can you kind of explain that procedure for our possibilities there?
Sure, so, right now, we're trying to do this without filing either a formal appeal with a board utilization, or a suit against the county to recoup these taxes. We're working with the assessor's office to see if the assessor can essentially voluntarily take the properties off the tax rules for two thousand and twenty, and some of them even perhaps for two thousand and nineteen, to see if they can do that as well. And if they can voluntarily then just refund those taxes paid to the city, without having to pursue a more formal action or claim against the county.
And I, I know we got, there was a credit given against the purchase price for the, the time we did not own the properties during two thousand and twenty. Is there at least a possibility of recuperating that prorated share from that point to the end of the year on these?
That's correct, we would see if the county can either waive entirely the tax bill for that year, in which case we might owe a refund to the seller, or if they can't refund entirely for that year, if they can at least essentially forego the taxes attributable to the period in which the city owned that property for two thousand and twenty.
Okay, all right, thanks. Thank you Mayor.
Sure. Anybody else have any other questions about any of the items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Alderwoman Sims, seconded by Alderman Weggie. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Roll call please Kelly.
Alderman Plufka.
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice.
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims.
Yes.
Alderman Weggie.
Yes.
Alderman Gould.
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller.
Yes.
Alderwoman Evelyn.
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes by vote of eight to zero.
Great, thank you. This brings us to item ten, old business, we have two items under the old business. The first is a continuation of the public hearing that was, that we had earlier in the meeting, and that, so the first is bill number sixty-three oh nine. Can we get a second reading by title only, please, Mr. City Attorney?
Excuse me, thought I could hold down my spacebar and speak. Bill number sixty-three oh nine, second reading, and ordinance granting a conditional use permit and approving a site plan for an enclosed recreational facility for a swim school on property numbered eight oh seven one, eight oh seven five, Manchester Road.
Great. Bola, yeah, there you are. Lisa is not in attendance tonight, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, but we do have Heather. Do you want Heather to just have an explanation of any, the change that went from the last meeting on this, or do you want to handle that?
Um, right, that's why Heather's here. Shortly before we met last, before the board met at the last meeting, we, Lisa received some comments from the petitioner regarding one of the conditions for the C U P, and we requested additional time to kind of sort that out with them, along with the Missouri Department of Transportation. So Heather is here to speak to that item. Kelly, will you acknowledge Heather? So she.
Heather's acknowledged, yeah.
I can unmute myself, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, Heather, if you would, just go ahead and, and just the sake of, I know the board knows about this, but for those listening, if you could just summarize the change.
So previously, the condition of approval was based on.
I don't see the bill under, on the agenda for the budget.
Hey Kelly, can, can you mute yourself, please? Go ahead, Heather, go ahead.
Sure, previously, the, the condition of approval was that Foss Swim School would be asked to approach MODOT, and through a permit issued by MODOT, get a left-turn lane built for the eastbound direction on Manchester Road. However, after further consideration, the city has instead pivoted to asking the Foss Swim School to support the city while they request that MODOT install that left-turn lane on the eastbound direction of Manchester Road.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions about that, the reason, the rationale behind that change? Do, does anyone have any questions about bill number sixty-three oh nine in general? Alderman Lockmiller.
Mayor, could I ask, I believe it's Craig O'Halloran, I, could I ask him a couple of questions?
Sure.
Hi Craig.
Hey, good evening.
Thanks for taking, taking on this challenging site. At public safety chair, I just got a couple of questions regarding your facility, and I was just wondering how the, the water, how it is chlorinated, the sixty-eight thousand gallons, is it chlorine or bleach?
It's a liquid bleach, I don't have the exact compound of it, but it's a, it's a safe chemical that we've used in all of our facilities, it's a combination of liquid bleach and, and acid to treat the pH in the pool.
And it's stored there in a tank, some sort of.
It is, so there's a, there's a vessel that sits outside the tank, so that prevents it from being, if there's any leaking, it'll be captured within the secondary tank.
And I noticed you do some infant training, is there any type of a UV filter system to that? You just.
Yes, yes, there'll be a UV system that will be a secondary disinfectant to the, the chlorine that's added to the water.
Great. And does anybody besides yourself monitor that, is that through the county health department, Saint Louis County?
Yeah, we, I believe we have an annual inspection and a license that we need to pay to the public health, or Department of Health. We'll have multiple CPOs on staff, so our manager, who will be running the facility, is a certified pool operator, and has been trained in all the aspects of managing a pool and the surrounding facilities.
And then as far as the instructors go, is there any type of certification for them?
We have our own custom training curriculum, whereby they go through fifty hours of training before they teach one class with an individual student, and then within the first year, they do another additional fifty hours of training. So we've developed a curriculum around how we teach kids how to swim. Our managers will be lifeguard and CPR certified, in addition to that.
Okay, well, thank you. Once again, I know it's a challenging site, and I think it's going to be a great addition to that part of the city, so, thank you for your efforts.
Yeah, thank you, we appreciate the support of the city.
Thanks Mayor.
Yeah, sure thing, Alderman Lockmiller, anybody else have any other questions? Okay, with that, the chair would entertain a motion to approve bill number sixty-three oh nine in the ordinance form.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Lockmiller, seconded by Alderwoman O'Neal, any further discussion? Roll call please Kelly. And you're, you're muted Kelly.
I was using my spacebar. Alderman Plufka.
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice.
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims.
Yes.
Alderman Weggie.
Yes.
Alderman Gould.
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller.
Yes.
Alderwoman Evelyn.
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal.
Yes.
Bill passes by a vote of eight to zero, and will become ordinance number forty-nine fifty when signed by the mayor.
Great, thank you, and as Alderman Lockmiller said, Craig, welcome to the city of Brentwood. For, I know Alderman Plufka and myself, we sat on public, our planning and zoning for ten, twelve years, and we're, we know that the difficulty of that site as well, so we're thrilled that, that you're coming here and, and going to improve that piece of property. Next, next on the agenda is bill number sixty-three one four. Can we get a second read of bill sixty-three one four by title only, please, Mr. City Attorney?
Bill number sixty-three one four, second reading and consideration for adoption, and ordinance adopting the annual budget for the city of Brentwood for the calendar year two thousand and twenty-one, and providing for the effective date of this ordinance.
Great, thank you. Bola, do we have some few changes to, to discuss?
Yes, we do Mayor.
Is Karen handling that, or?
She can, Karen, okay, there she is.
Okay, Karen, the floor is yours, if you would. And you're muted right now Karen.
Okay, let me, I'm trying to come down here and share my screen. And where is my memo? Right here. Can you see the memo? Is that on my screen?
Oh, yeah.
I know.
Do you have it Bola?
I do.
Okay, this laptop doesn't work as well as my desktop. At any rate, I'm going to pull it up here for myself. The, at the request at the last meeting, to fund an additional police officer, we came up with cutting, having the departments cut the general fund budget, and as you, there were different amounts for different steps, but we went with a person starting in at the first step, and their benefits, which was a little over sixty-eight thousand dollars, sixty-eight, three, three, one. And with that, the departments, based on their percent of the total general fund budget, were asked to cut, make cuts that would total that sixty-eight thousand, that's the yellow numbers on that memo, budget reductions. And, I mean, I can go through them, but for example, administration did travel in meetings and miscellaneous contractual, and our budgeted amount was, or request was fifty-one hundred dollars. And then at the, in the addition to that, in this memo, was simply, the departments just emailed me what the effects would be to their budgets, and that's what you see in the rest of that memo. And then, within, within, if Bola, if you want to, if you can pull up that attachment, I think one A, Bola?
Okay.
Which is the fund balances, et cetera. And I'm going to pull mine up. Essentially, there really was no change, because we cut the budgets and then added that amount back in. This is also, the numbers you're looking at on the screen are, are on that attachment, also including revenues, the use tax, and I will just point out, if you go to the second, or, it's not on there, um, the fund balance will be right at fifty percent for twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, with these budget cuts, not using any other revenue, other than the budget cuts. So our fund balance would be right on target for what we're trying to get to. And with that, it's basically no change, I think it's about two or three hundred dollars, and that's because somebody offered up a couple more hundred dollars than we had asked them to. And other than that, it's, it's pretty much the same numbers as what was presented at the last board meeting. And I.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you so much Karen. In terms of keeping this in order, does anybody have any questions about, specifically about the, the funding of that police officer, that, and the calculations, or how that was, how that was achieved? Alderman Gould.
Yes, I've got a question, probably for the chief, or chief of police. You, you took eleven thousand out of overtime, is that, is that because you feel this additional officer is going to help mitigate some of that overtime issues, or are you still comfortable with that number of seventy-nine thousand for the year?
It will help coverage. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
It will help with coverage. Additionally, the, that budget of overtime is fairly easy for us to manage. We create park patrols, and we create retail response patrols and things like that with our overtime, so we have a, we usually normally can have a good handle on that money and how it's used, and how much it's used, so it's, it's a fund that we can use as much as we need to, so to speak.
Thank you.
Alderman Weggie.
Yeah, just, just for clarification, with this change to the budget, but this isn't authorization to go ahead and hire another police officer, correct? This is just to amend the budget to allow that to happen, but we would still be going through public safety and, and making the decision to hire or not?
That, that, that's correct.
Okay.
This is simply, as you, best way to put it, is the way you put it, and the way Alderman Plufka put it at the last meeting, and then it's just planning, if, if the board decides to do that.
Great, thank you.
I think Alderwoman Tice had her hand up now.
Yes, I have two questions. First is the, it looked like there, you added two hundred and ninety-five thousand for the use tax, is that sort of your best guess on what the use tax might be, or?
That's my first question. It is really a best guess, but it is from three sources, one of which was the municipal league, one was Dan Cook, and one was talking to another city, a couple other cities. And that's probably, that ended up probably being the low end of a very conservative figure.
That's super, and then my other question is kind of for Lisa, but she's not here, but it looked like Planning and Development cut thirty-two hundred dollars, but the, I mean, I know it's not done yet, but her language talked about suspending or postponing the comp, the comp plan marketing, and then the development infill zoning issues, so I guess it just seemed like a, I mean, I know there's a lot to come. I mean, I know there's a lot to come still, but is it right for us to assume that $3,200 missing from her budget would then keep the, those residential housing, the infill planning and marketing that those would be postponed?
Yes. She was going to hire a third party to assist her with a lot of that. So. Yeah. That's an accurate assessment.
You have anything else, Alderman Tice?
No, thank you. Thanks.
Okay. I, I think I saw Alderwoman Sims' hand first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we didn't have an, we didn't cover this in any way at the committee level, it wasn't brought forward. This is, you know, the first time that this was raised was when Alderman Plufka brought it forward at the, at the last Alderman meeting. I mean, are the departments okay with absorbing these changes? I mean, is this, I mean, I can look at the spreadsheet, but I mean, are you, since we didn't discuss it when, when it was your time to be up, I guess I'd just like to generally hear, you know, if this is, sort of meets with your, meets with your approval.
Is the, Alderman Sims, just for clarification, is the question posed to all the various department heads, or?
Yeah, I mean, I guess-
Would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, the, I mean, the, generally, yeah, the department heads. I mean, I, I mean-
I can speak to that. You know, a specific request was made of staff, and this is a response to that. I asked them to provide an explanation or a narrative on what the impact would be, because I know that there are impacts to each department, and that's what we've provided you here.
Okay. And then Karen just said, I mean, I heard your presentation, but you're saying that we're not, we're not really going to see a change to the bottom line because, because of the, I'll call them belt tightening measures that we see here in the spreadsheet to accommodate the requests. Is that accurate?
Yes, they were asked to cut $68,330 whatever, and they did. And then, and again, it was based on their percentage of the total budget, which amount, it ended up being, obviously, the larger departments took bigger cuts, but a department like, I don't think Janet's on here, but it's Community Relations, and there's no personnel on there, but there is a budget there. And asking her to cut a flat rate, which would have been Janet, would have been a real large portion or percentage of her budget. So they were asked to cut based on the percentage of their total, of their budget to the total budget. And so then the $68,331 was plugged back into the police department's salary line and benefit line.
Okay, and then my final statement, I guess, would just be a thank you for going back after the fact to, to do this work. I'm sure I can, I can see that it obviously took some time. So appreciate the added effort. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, thank you. Alderman Lockmiller?
And I'd just add that this isn't a one-time expenditure. This is going to be an ongoing expenditure, and these cuts are going to have to be made and even compounded. So I guess my question is, and I don't know if the chief wants to answer this, or Alderman Plufka, we've had two reports by CPSM back in '16 and one just last year that really does not identify that we have a staffing shortage. It shows that our workload, at the worst time, was just during the afternoons of summer, we hit 50% personnel workload. They recommend if we ever hit 60% available personnel to workload, that that's when you would look to increase staffing. So I'm just wondering, we've paid for these reports and we seem to be neglecting them. What's, what am I missing?
Alderman Plufka? What you're missing, Alderman Lockmiller, with all due respect, is the conversation that we had in committee last year over two separate meetings where I demonstrated, I think, quite clearly that the CPSM report was flawed from a number of standpoints and how it evaluated how we use our officers. They described off time as not really off time. And what we just, what we, what we discovered with the questioning I asked was that the 23% to 50% in, you know, in use numbers were completely flawed, that our officers were actually engaged in other activities, but not directly engaged in apprehending or processing suspects, but they were still engaged in activity. And those, that CPS report is, CPSM report is completely flawed, in, in my opinion, based on the conversations that you were present for, that we had in that committee. So to say that we're ignoring the report, I, I think is disingenuous at best. We're not ignoring it. We in fact evaluated it and looked at it in detail on a couple of different meetings. So you, you can say you think it's accurate, and I can say I think it's not, but to say that we didn't analyze it or take it into account is completely inaccurate. As to the issue of the ongoing cost of this, we're pretty far ahead, out in front of our skis here on this at this point. All I've ever asked to this point is that we include it in the budget. That doesn't mean it gets spent. And you can look at any department on this budget and look at what's actually being spent and what was budgeted. And in almost every instance, we are under budget. Okay? And so the, the notion that, that this is somehow going to tax the other departments to the point of some improper belt tightening is, again, I, I think way beyond pale. We're talking about $68,000 here, spread among a number of various departments and a budget that is over $18 million. So, you know, I, I think the concerns there are completely overblown. And this is a conversation we will have, I'm certain, both at committee level and at Aldermanic level, about these expenditures, if we ever get to a point where we can talk about it and talk about bringing on an additional police officer. I, I, you know, the chief said it himself at the last meeting, he kept it out of the budget because he was concerned about COVID-19 restrictions and about, and what everybody was concerned about, the impact that the economy was going to have, or that the change in the economy was going to have on our ability to, to receive funds and, and make sure that we provide all the services that we provide throughout the year. And it's looking like our fears and our planning have turned out that we're not going to experience the kinds of 30 and 40% reductions in, in tax revenue that we thought we might do. And we're not out of this yet, and I understand that. And I'm not going to be interested in trying to bring any motion at committee level first to talk about the introduction of a new police officer unless or until we can demonstrate, at least to my satisfaction, before I'm going to bring it up, that we're through this and that we're on solid financial footing to be able to afford this. But I'll try to make the case at that time, but I'm a little perturbed about having to make the case when all I'm asking is that it be budgeted for.
Alderman Lockmiller, if I could jump in real quick. Two, two years ago, we arranged with the school district to have a SRO position paid for by the school, 75% of it at least. What that did in effect was made our platoons uneven. We're, we're missing that body on a platoon. And that was one of the reasons we were asking for an additional officer was to augment that SRO position that's gone for 10 months out of the year, because we have uneven crews due to the fact that officer fixes at the school. So that, this hire would be the 20th officer to plug into those four line platoons, so to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Thank you. I just want to make a note that Word Four is being hit by this cut with Public Works especially. We were hoping to get additional lighting this year. That looks like that may not happen because of this. It is the year that Word Four is due for our forestry ups and downs that every other word has had. And so in both those cases, we're taking a hit because of this. I understand the thinking behind it. I just want to note that if something happens, I would certainly like to see Word Four have those things reinstated so we can get what other words have had to.
Anyone else? Well, if not, the Chair would entertain a motion to perfect Bill 6314 in the ordinance form. Now, Alderman Lockmiller?
I thought we were voting on this amendment. I-
No, I don't think we have. Boa, you can correct me on that. I don't think this is an actual amendment, is it? I mean, this is, is this amendment? Is this part of the whole, whole budget? I mean-
It is.
It is, but-
I also want to remind Alderman Lockmiller, he had sent information regarding another change that he wanted in the budget, if you want to speak to that right now.
Yeah, that's why I was jumping in. I didn't know we were perfecting-
Okay, go ahead, Steve.
Well, in lieu of the discussion we're going to have on speed cushions over at the crossing, the costs of those are going to pretty well, pretty well push $10 grand, $10,000. And we've only got $25,000 put away for traffic calming in the 2021 budget. So what I'm asking for, if we could move from the streetlights, $25,000, which would reduce that streetlight budget to $50,000, and reallocate that $25,000 to traffic calming, and that would increase that from 25,000 to 50,000. So it's just a reallocation. It won't change the bottom line. I've spoke with Dan, and his request for streetlights would still be able to be met. And this would give us additional traffic calming funds for other areas of the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Boa, I just need some clarification, because I didn't hear the answer. Is that, the moving the money around for that potential officer, that $68,000, is that an amendment to the budget that needs to be taken up by the board?
It is.
Okay, thank you. Well, then, before we take up Alderman Lockmiller's, can we get a motion to approve the, the reallocation of that $68,000 in the budget as presented by our Director of Finance?
So moved. Second.
We had a motion by Alderman Plufka, seconded by Alderman Gould. Do we have any discussion, further discussion on that amendment? Okay, can we take, do we need a roll call on this, Boa?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please, Kelly. And then again, this is just on the amendment to the, to the proposed budget to, to reallocate the funds for the approximately $68,000.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderwoman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
No.
Alderwoman Evelyn? Is she there? Alderwoman Evelyn?
I think we've lost her again.
There she is.
Yes.
There she is. She just voted yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Seven to one vote passes to amend the budget.
Okay, thank you. Now, Alderman Lockmiller, are you wanting to make a motion for that, the reallocation of the, from, to increase from 25,000 to 50,000 for traffic hog?
Yeah, once again, to move 25,000 from streetlights in the public work capital improvement to the 25 currently in the traffic calming public works capital improvement to increase that to, from 25,000 to 50. So it's, that's a motion.
Second.
I'm sorry. It does not-
Okay, Karen, hang on.
I'm sorry.
Hang on just a second, Karen. Hang on a second. So we've got a motion by Alderman Lockmiller and seconded by Alderman Gould to reallocate the 25,000. Karen, did you want to speak to-
I just want to say it does not change the budgeted amount. It just, this is exactly what he said, is moving it. So there's no totals being changed or anything. That's why it's not pointed out in that budget, the paperwork that I turned in for the police officer portion.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any further discussion about Alderwoman Tice?
Steve, you kind of mentioned talking to Dan, but are there specific lights or areas that won't receive lighting because of this?
He did not give me specifics as to who had requested lighting and where. I don't know if he's here, but-
He is. He's here. He's on.
Dan, can you speak to that, if, if, if you know?
Yeah, we haven't identified a final list for streetlights, so that basically is correct, that, you know, we won't impact anything. We've got the lights identified in Brentwood Forest, but there were no candidates for the other wards just yet, but we do have enough to do several lights, depending on whether they're solar or AC powered. And then, as was mentioned, if we did a speed cushion on a larger road like a McKnight, that would take a pretty substantial cut out of the 25,000. So this will make you intact, plus give you a little bonus for doing some other traffic calming measures in '21.
Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Waggy?
Hey, Dan, while we got you, the, the solar lights are ultimately a savings over running an AC wire to, to the lights, correct?
Correct. Once you, we can put the solar ones in like we've done in other places, and we will do, you know, still do the ones in York whenever we get to that point. But the solar, as you mentioned, there's no operating expenditures after that. Once they're in, as long as there's a sun, we're good. The AC, you would have a recurring bill with Ameren, you know, depends on which style we pick, but it could be as high as $22 a month is what we've been paying.
But also the, the cost of running that line, I mean, I, the, the lights that we put this year, it was thousands of dollars to have that, that run by the electrician, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, Reinhold put in, it was roughly $70,000 worth of conduits, and then we still paid the previous year for the wiring and lights with Ameren. So you're correct.
So that, and the, my point I'm trying to make to myself is that by switching over the solar, that's a way to mitigate that reduced cost for streetlights and still achieve the streetlights that we would possibly want to do if we, if we switched over.
That's what I'm hoping for. If there's a good candidate, you know, as long as we have exposure to the sun, there's not a tree canopy blocking it, that would be an ideal candidate to put one of those in.
Okay, thank you.
Alderwoman Sims?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dan, I'm confused. Are, are you saying that we, reallocating this money won't affect, I mean, from my recollection, sitting on public safety over all these years, we have a schedule of lights to be either at, to be added, and we just, we do it as we're able. Are, are you saying that we won't, that we won't, that no light will not get installed if we real, reallocate this money?
No, we'll still be doing lights. You know, if you recall, there were candidates in the original list from probably three years ago that were tabled, postponed, whatever you want to call it. For instance, Douglas Court, and they don't want the lights, so we haven't put the lights in. You know, we budgeted for it, but that's gone away, you know, with them not wanting it.
But there are people who do want lights, and if we run out of money, they're not going to get them, right?
Not necessarily, because if we're under on other items, you know, we could possibly do a budget amendment. You know, we've been under on paving, we've been under on sidewalk work, so I wouldn't say no until we're further along in the budget.
Well, by that logic, we could do a budget amendment subsequently to this, try to do these speed cushions, correct?
Right.
Correct.
I, in my view, you know, I don't, I don't agree, I mean, I'm just looking at the, the text of what's in the board. I don't agree with the premise that there's a popularity for speed cushions. So far, what I have seen is a vocal handful of neighbors complaining about the, the, you know, speeders. And until there's a, you know, a data-driven analysis of those claims, I don't, I don't, I don't think we're serving the public interest by just accommodating these, these complaints. I mean, without any consideration of, you know, what, what does that mean in terms of how the other streets will be burdened? Is it, are, are there complaints, are they, are they borne out by the facts? And, and I have no indication that anyone who's made these complaints has avail- And I have no indication that anyone who's made these complaints has availed themselves of the traffic calming toolkit that we spent years developing to see if there was something else that may be addressed. So to just leapfrog over, I think, a process that we have in place and to take it from a line item of streetlights that have been in development for years, I don't, I don't think is, I don't think it's indicated. I think that there's, you know, lights, in my view, we've got a car clotting problem, and I think if there are lights, I mean, I think that addresses that, you know, that underlying concern more. So I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not in favor of this amendment. And I, I think that if subsequently down the road, it, data supports, you know, doing something, speed cushions being one of them, after thoroughly addressing the implications that may exist from, you know, what impediment may be caused to first responders, then we can do a budget amendment. But I think to just reduce, you know, this line item by a third, I'm not persuaded by the complaints of a few neighbors. That's, that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Ebling, did you have your hand up?
No.
Okay, Alderman Lockmuller.
I would somewhat agree with Alderwoman Sims. I think we do need a criteria for any traffic calming we put up, and we did spend a lot of time in that toolkit. So I'm hoping after the first of the year to direct, you know, have discussions on just because someone thinks they need a speed cushion in front of their house that they get one. As far as the one that we've installed, it's really still in the testing phase. Now, Chief Curtin wants to see how the, how it does through the winter and through the snow. But once again, this is for traffic calming. It isn't for speed cushions throughout the city. We've got different, and we can even investigate different devices that we could use in place of speed cushions. I just want to be able to have those funds available for whatever traffic calming measure we take. I, you know, I don't believe Dan has been actually offered up a list by any other alderman for streetlights currently. If I'm, if I'm wrong, please correct me.
If I may speak, Mayor, what we did when the board first directed us or directed Dan to take a look at maybe there's an opportunity for the streetlights was that in partnership with Police Department, Fire Department, as they go around, and Dan's department specifically, we went around town and identified streets where additional illumination, you know, could be used. So that was how we came up with the initial list. And then Dan had to do a test to see just how much light would be needed, if any light would be needed. So he did that and came up with an initial list. And now we've concluded that initial list. And the second phase of this project is, you know, the meeting that Dan and I had with Alderwoman O'Neal and others from Brentwood Forest. So I don't know that we've completed the entire city. I think there's an opportunity for Dan to continue to drive around town and to get feedback from the aldermen if there are other opportunities where we can put these lights. So I wouldn't say we've exhausted the list. We just don't have any additional locations in place because we need to continue to drive around town and locate other opportunities where we can put this in.
Alderman Lockmuller, are you, are you finished?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Alderwoman Ebling, I think now you do have your hand up.
Yes. I'm still trying to figure out if there is enough money for us to get the streetlights we recrested last year. They spent a lot of time running around here, finding places for streetlights because it is dark and we do have a lot of car break-ins. And I'm, I'm trying to figure out if we're, can expect those this year or not.
Dan, I don't know, are you in a position to answer that question? I don't know what ones are scheduled for '21.
I'd have to look at the list again, but I believe when we met ages ago, there's probably half a dozen or so in Brentwood Forest. I know we probably did four in 2020, like along high school and a couple other areas, you know. And then I know in particular, there's one at like Bobalink and Eager. So in other words, some done in each ward. So the goal would be to try to do, you know, the ones that were outstanding, which I believe was roughly six.
Sitting here tonight, Dan, are you in a position to opine as to how this motion would affect the city's ability to install any of those lights that are already identified in Ward Four?
Yeah, even with 50,000, we should be able to accommodate that. You know, there were a couple I looked at that could be solar, and then they wouldn't require the conduit, so there would be a little bit of a savings there. And then if they are AC powered, then of course we have to go through our discussion with Ameren to see if they can accommodate those. They may not be able to. In the instance of the ones we picked out over the years, there were three I know that fell off the list entirely because of limitations with the Ameren source. So I know Agnes, Rose, Evans, those three came off the list because they weren't going to give us the power supply from those nearby poles. With Ward Four, I don't believe that's the case, but we'll vet it out. You know, there's plenty of poles in that area. I think we'd be okay.
Okay. Alderwoman Ebling, does that answer the question that you had?
Sorry, not really. I still don't know if we're going to get the streetlights.
Okay. Alderwoman O'Neal.
Yeah, just to clarify, Brentwood Forest has a safety committee that has sent the city a list of at least nine spots where we would like additional lighting. I don't know where that list has gone. It should be there for anyone to see. We were hoping to get a good number of those this year, as many as possible, and I hope to firm things up. So I really would like to see what the problem is with not having that list and not having a sufficient number. So I'd like to see the money still stay in lighting, not cushioning. Thank you.
Alderman Plufka. Thanks. I understood the motion to be moving it from, within public works, moving it from lighting into traffic calming generally. And I'm, I've got to tell you, I'm supportive of this. I understand the differences of opinion having to do with speed cushions, and I know we're going to have those debates about whether they work at all or whether they work in certain areas and all that. But I do believe that this is a, I think this is a good motion. I don't think, I'm guessing, but I don't think that reducing the lighting budget is going to adversely affect the six or nine locations in Brentwood Forest. Those locations may or may not be, we may or may not be able to do them for reasons other than budget. It may be an Ameren issue, it may be other issues. We may be able to do all of them. But I don't, yeah, again, we're talking about the budgeting process. We're not talking about actually allocating this money to be spent yet. We're just talking about budgeting them and putting them in the categories to give us an idea of how we're going to spend money over the next year. I'm in support of this motion. Thank you. Anybody else have any further questions or discussions concerning Alderman Lockmuller's motion to reallocate or move $25,000 from the lighting line to traffic calming? Alderman Gould?
Yeah, I just want to say that I support this as well. I would say that it's probably more than just a vocal few that have issues with traffic calming generally and are looking for the city to make some solutions for that, whether that's, you know, near crosswalks, busy intersections where pedestrians are, et cetera, near our schools. I think traffic calming is definitely a hot button that's more than just a few residents that are just vocal on social media or otherwise. So I think this is a smart way to shift it so that we can start having those discussions about traffic calming issues and still leaving, and according to Dan's opinion, plenty of budget for lighting.
Thank you. Alderman Waggy.
Yeah, I just want to, I fully support this as well. I, my personal opinion is that I think the traffic calming toolkit has failed us. I haven't seen a successful implementation of that. We've had citizens run around, get petitions, and nothing's happened by executing that. And I think we have to be more aggressive with these traffic problems. I think getting the traffic monitor was a great thing so we can get real facts and data about the speeds and the volumes that we're seeing on these streets. I was on, on one of our big traffic areas today, going door to door, getting prepped for the public safety meeting, and there is just overwhelming support for being more aggressive to try and solve these, these traffic issues that we have. So I fully support doing this to, to make it ready so that we can have these conversations and implement these changes.
Alderman O'Neal.
Just one more comment. Traffic calming could be curtailing the speeding on High School Drive that we experienced rush hour as well as during the day. Having a police officer sitting in a patrol car deters some people, but until we start getting tickets written and, and some real enforcement in there, I don't think things are going to change. So the whole idea of speed cushions versus stop signs versus whatever, I think is more complicated than we're talking about here tonight.
I apologize, but I cannot remember. Did we have a second on this, Kelly or Steve?
I think it was.
We did.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, do we have any other further discussions on that? Seeing, can we get, okay, so we need to get a roll call on this, this motion to amend. This motion of Alderman Lockmuller, again, it's to reallocate $25,000 from lighting to traffic calming. Yes, Phil would be in favor of making, approving that, moving or reallocation of that fund. So with that, Kelly, can we get a roll call, please?
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Oh.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmuller?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ebling?
No.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
No.
Vote is five, five yea and three nay. It passes, motion passes.
Okay, great. So we've had a couple of amendments that have passed to the, to Bill Number 6314. And just a heads up, where I am, there's a wind advisory, and I've almost lost electricity two times during this meeting. So if, if we do lose and everything goes dark, Alderman Lockmuller will take over the running of the, of the meeting. So having said that, do we have any other changes, any motions, any amendments relating to the 2021 budget? Okay, seeing none. With that, the chair will now entertain a motion to perfect Bill Number 6314 into ordinance form.
Still moved.
Second.
All right, we had a motion by Alderwoman Ebling, seconded by Alderwoman Tice. Any further discussion on the, on this bill, the budget? Seeing none, can we get a roll call, please, Kelly?
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmuller?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ebling?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Okay, by a vote of eight to zero, the bill passes, and it'll become ordinance Number 4951 with amendments as noted.
Fantastic. Congratulations, everybody. We now have a balanced budget for 2021. I can tell you, that's, that's a, that's a great thing any given year, but even more so, given what has transpired in 2020. And I can assure you that we are in a much better position than a lot of other municipalities, not just in St. Louis County, but obviously across the country. So hats off to you all and as well as all the employees of the city who are willing to, to contribute to help and to make those sacrifices necessary in order to get a balanced budget, given all the, all the circumstances that we've had to deal with. So with that, we will move on. We do not have any new business because we have pulled that item off the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. So that brings us to Item 12, Citizens Comment. So once again, if anybody in the public cares to address the board, now is the time to do so, you will be given again up to three minutes.
We don't have anybody who's raised their hand at this time.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. And so we do have a need to go into closed session again. So, and those are both pursuant to, well, first of all, Alderman Plufka, do you appear to make a motion? Sure, I would, I would make a motion that we move to an executive session under Chapter, Missouri Chapter of Vice Statutes 610.021, subsection 1 and subsection 2, referring to legal and real estate, and to adjourn our meeting therefrom.
Second.
Okay, we had the motion by Alderman Plufka, seconded by Alderman Gould to go into closed session and to adjourn from the regular meeting therefrom. Any discussion on this motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Woman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmuller?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ebling?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
By a vote of eight to zero, we'll move to closed session.
Great, thank you, everybody. We'll see you in just a couple of minutes.